on the Pledge of Allegiance this evening, so we won't repeat that. That brings us to the approval of tonight's agenda. I'll check with staff first. Mr. Trechun, are there any items on the agenda this evening that need to be changed from a staff perspective?
There is not, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Check with the council. Are there any items that council members would like to change or anyone want to remove items from the consent agenda for separate consideration this evening? All right. And we'll just double check with members of the public. Normally, we have a fairly light consent agenda this evening. This is Section 10 of tonight's agenda, 10A through E. These items are normally taken up as a single motion with limited opportunity for public input or questions, but we do want to make sure if somebody is here for one of those items and has something they wish to say or a question they wish to ask, that they have an opportunity to do that earlier in the meeting rather than waiting till the very end. So we'll just check, is anyone here to comment or ask a question about an item in Section 10 of our agenda? Once again, those items are usually taken up as a single motion, and it's fairly ministerial or administrative and not terribly controversial. Is there anyone here again for an item in Section 10 tonight? All right. Seeing no one, recognition for that, then we'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Removed by Councilmember Schroeder, seconded by Councilmember Strawn. Any discussion on the motion to approve the agenda? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously, and that agenda is approved. That then brings us to public comment. This is an opportunity for members of the public to speak to items that are not on tonight's agenda but may either be related to city business or of interest to people in the city. We will provide an opportunity for members of the public to speak to agenda items as they come up, but we always do at the start of each meeting, want to also provide an opportunity for more general comment. Is there anyone here to speak to public comment on general topics this evening that are not on tonight's agenda? And just to check, Mr. Trechun, anybody participating remotely?
Nobody's in the queue.
Okay. All right. With that then, it doesn't sound like we've got anyone here for public comment on a general basis, so we can move then right into the rest of our agenda. We don't have any recognitions or donations on the council agenda this evening. Nothing's been removed from consent, so the next item on the agenda is our business items. And our first business item is item 7A, which is receive a presentation from Visit Roseville. And we've got Julie Warren and Liz Nowak here this evening. Oh, I might have an old name there for Liz to give us a presentation update on the activities of the Visit Roseville organization.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor, council members. My name is Julie Warren. I'm CEO of Visit Roseville, and I've brought with me tonight Liz Nowak, who is our Director of Marketing Communications. We are going to give you an overview of 2022 and a look into 2023, but we are also showing you the science behind the decisions we are making in marketing communications for our city. Why does tourism matter?
We need the... Oh, we're cut. There we go.
There we go. Assistant. Why does tourism matter? This fact sheet gives you a capsule view...
Can you go into presentation mode so we can see the slides more?
How do you do that? Oh.
I can do it. We may have to get our...
Are you driving now?
I'm driving.
Oh, he's driving.
Took over.
Fighting.
Well, if I can. Slideshow.
There we go.
Here we go. Now click on the next one. There you go. Back. Geez. Thank you. Why does tourism matter? This fact sheet gives you a capsule view of the effect COVID had on our industry and how we are recovering. The Minnesota tourism numbers come directly from Explore Minnesota. In 2019, the state saw $16.6 billion in gross sales and $1.1 billion in statewide sales tax. Those numbers dropped in 2020 to $11.7 billion in gross sales and $731 million in state sales tax. Those, in the majority of that revenue was earned outside of the Twin Cities area. In fact, the North Shore reported record-breaking occupancies and average daily rate, or ADR, during COVID-19, and we just got the 2022 figures from the state of Minnesota. Duluth area ended the year at 61% occupancy with $151 average rate, which is incredible. In Roseville, we went from an average occupancy of 67.5 in 2019 to 37.8 in 2020. We are on a steadily rising trend, recording 49.3% occupancy in 2021, and in 2022, ended the year at 56.5%. The Minnesota average was 55.3. Average rate-wise, we went from 102 in 2019, bottomed out at $79 in 2020, and ended 2022 with a record $108 average rate, which for us is very good. Our board also created new mission and vision statements during our three-year strategic planning session with Destinations Next in 2022. Our mission: Transform our community by promoting Roseville as a place to work, play, and stay. Our vision: Perfectly positioned to bring people together into a welcoming and vibrant community. And an interesting side note in this, in the governor's proposed Explore Minnesota Tourism budget, EMT is selling Minnesota as a top market to work, live, and play. Copyers. In terms of our... Oh, that's you, I'm sorry. Yep. In terms of our website and social channels, we're definitely on the road to recovery. Our 2022 website stats have increased with over 97,000 sessions compared to 76,000 in 2021. We have also experienced increases in the number of users and overall page views. Our social channels continue to increase in following, but we've noticed that it's definitely quality over quantity based on engagement. We have 16,000 followers on Facebook and 2,000 on Instagram. In 2022, we focused on producing videos featuring our hotels and local restaurants, and based on the number of views and the people that shared it, it's something we're focused on in 2023. And we also send out monthly newsletters to 16,000 subscribers. Good business is slowly coming back, and future slides will show it is not expected to fully recover until 2024. 2021 room nights ended up higher based on Meet Minneapolis booking the 2025 Boys Volleyball Tournament, which will be a citywide event that has tentatively booked 2,250 room nights in Roseville. So cross your fingers those all pick up. We went into 2021 expecting to have more public spaces open, but for the most part, events had limited attendance restrictions or no attendance at all. Things didn't really open for the public until the vaccine became more readily accessible in April of 2021. Companies still working remotely have not helped group, though businesses have shown a willingness to get back on the road, with 70% of business travelers expecting to take at least one trip to attend conferences, conventions, or trade shows based on a survey conducted by U.S. Travel in the third quarter of 2022. And these numbers that you see right here, these are all leads that our organization sends out. Every hotel has their own sales and marketing aspect or their own person, so they book their own group meeting business, too. Some key info from Business Travel Tracker, which is a product of U.S. Travel Association, J.D. Power, and Tourism Economics, find American companies are easing up on pandemic-era restrictions on business travel. COVID fears are diminishing as an impediment for travel, though labor shortages, especially in the hard-hit hospitality industry, still remain a concern. In Roseville, all of our hotels are experiencing staffing shortages in varying degrees, which range from housekeeping in front desk to maintenance in breakfast. Some hotels are even bringing in J1 interns to help with the spring and summer business. With all that, there is still a pent-up demand for travel, especially in the leisure segment, which is really good for us. Travel predictions see a continued resilience of domestic leisure travel, continued improvement in domestic business travel, and a sluggish recovery for international inbound travel. While leisure travel will remain resilient, we are expecting gains to be more modest in 2023 as pent-up demand softens and the economy likely slows down. The increased accessibility of outbound travel will also push some Americans to replace domestic trips with those abroad, while inflation eating away at discretionary spending and a softening labor market could pose risks to the strong forecast. Supporting the leisure comeback are the waning virus fears, continued rotation in consumer spending from goods to services, pent-up demand for travel, and excess savings for many Americans, unless they became addicted to shopping on Amazon. Could be a real problem. Domestic business travel is struggling its recovery through 2021, but a boost in pent-up demand was realized in the second half of 2022. Rising corporate travel sentiment largely supports the previously upbeat outlook. However, the oncoming recession could further derail the recovery in 2023. There has been a slight downgrade in both volume and real spending, mostly in 2023, but there is no change in the recovery timeline. While domestic business travel volume is expected to fully recover in 2024, real spending by this sector is not projected to recover within the range of the forecast, so not before 2027. Key factors that are going to help drive business travel recovery, which Roseville Hotels are in desperate need of Sunday through Thursday, they need that corporate traveler, include the return to the office, easing restrictions, pent-up demand for more face-to-face professional interactions, the return of large conferences and conventions, and a rescheduling of some previously canceled events. Association bookings are down, but the Doubletree is hosting both the Kiwanis and Lyons regional meetings this quarter, so that's very good news for them, because that should sell out their hotel. One hotel still ramping up is The Avid, a wonderful property that unfortunately opened in July of 2020. That was not good. That said, they do have our major group base blocks for USA Cup, Back to the 50s, Horse Shows, and they're definitely on the radar of Minnesota State Fair visitors.
All right. So one thing, one tool in our toolbox is Zartico. I'm going to talk a little bit about that, and you can see from the slide, this shows year-end Zartico data. And Zartico is a tool that tracks cellphone data and gives us insight to see who is visiting our city, where they're coming from, and how long they stay. A new feature includes the ability to see how much money they're spending at our destination. This shows us the top 10 markets and the visitor spending for everyone that visited Roseville in 2022, the top being the Fargo, North Dakota market, which had high visitation and a high spend. But when you look down at La Crosse, Wisconsin, they're spending a good amount of money, but they're visiting less. So that's our perfect example of what we do in marketing. We then target digital ads to the people in La Crosse and feature overnight stays or weekend getaways to increase their visits. On this next one, for example, looking at our top market of Fargo, North Dakota, we can then take that information and drill down even further to get a better understanding of what cities are included in that market and where we need to focus our marketing efforts. We have the ability to do this with any market. We can look year-long, specific dates, special events like the Minnesota State Fair, concerts, sporting events. The possibilities are endless.
We can also ask for dynamic visualizations, which show us where our visitors are coming from and how they are moving about in the city. We are going to take a deep dive into visitor movement for our wayfinding signage. This map is obviously static, but we have the ability to click on any link to find out starting location and where people visited while in our city. This map shows both visitors and resident movement. This next example is an example of the information gained by clicking on one of the links. Here we narrowed the map parameters to overnight visitors from Minnesota, North and South Dakota, Wisconsin, Illinois, and Iowa. If you are a person into data, you can go down a rabbit hole with all the things, how you can manipulate, everything you can find out with this. Plus, the tracking we can do with Zartico is for both residents and guests. We can slice and dice a whole host of ways, so if any city department would like more information on visitor or resident movement in the city, you can certainly give us a call, because it's a great tool. We are already talking to Rosedale about visitor origin and spend. And now, on to wayfinding. Wait, did we miss one? Oh, I did that. Has stated in the Roseville 2040 Plan, tourism is also critical to the vibrancy of the community. Rosedale Center attracts more than 16 million visitors a year. The importance of visitors to the local economy is evidenced by the fact that more than a quarter of Roseville businesses fall into either the retail trade or the accommodations and food service sectors. Continually investing in our city's systems of parks, trails, open spaces, and wayfinding signage will also help keep Roseville the gateway for guests coming from the Dakotas, Wisconsin, Iowa, Upper Minnesota, and Canada. There's also a trust factor when visitors see physical signage within a city that validates the information they found on their phone or received from others on getting around the city. The city has dedicated $200,000 in ARPA funding for wayfinding signage, and Visit Roseville is investing in the overall master plan. We contracted with Lane Designs and are currently in Phase 4, Design and Strategy Development. This phase looks at key entry points, portals, landmark elements, and other visual aids and gathering areas. Bob Lane is talking to Jesse Freehammer to review the volumes of major and minor traffic generators within the city limits and nearby Ramsey County. For example, he's asking for vehicular visits per year for Rosedale Center, City Hall, Wildlife Rehabilitation Center, the Skating Center Oval, and other venues and destinations. And Jesse just sent him the map today on traffic patterns. Since we are limited in the amount of information on any sign, the key traffic generators will help determine message content, and if more than one sign will be needed at any location. This information will also be helpful in determining pedestrian and trail wayfinding directional signage. This one here gives you a visual of the process of studying sign concepts. On this slide, you can see two takes on signing prior to Langdon Lake Park and lodging access. These are early studies, and they're not the final recommendations, but it's a good way for the team to study the options prior to actual recommendations. They are as detailed as noting that the fishing pier is only legible from 126 feet with a standard 24-inch square picto, and that translates into recognition time of 1.9 seconds at 45 miles an hour. We're also working closely with Mindot as they start and complete construction of the interchange on Highway 36 in Fairview. And our last wayfinding sign is a slide, is a scale view of what municipal signage might look like. A couple of other points are, Rosedale Center has been very interested in the wayfinding project, and they're going to work with their organization to enhance signage for around Rosedale and in Roseville, which is pretty neat. We have also had conversations with Kim O'Brien about working in collaboration for a smooth transition from Roseville to St. Paul, and vice versa for the Rice-Larpenter Alliance. And I know they have wayfinding elements in their master plan, so we're going to connect Bob and Kim to talk about what we can do to transition smoothly with them. And then working with Lane Designs has already paid off. While driving around Roseville, they noticed wrong info on southbound 35 and eastbound 36 going to Rosedale. Mindot has corrected southbound 35 for info for the Rosedale Center and the eastbound Highway 36 sign to Rosedale Center's backup. And then Bob also thinks that signage off of, to Rosedale up Highway 35 should use County Road C rather than referring traffic up Long Lake Road and down to County Road B, which is kind of a back route, bad way to go. So, you know, he's working on that right now.
Great. Another major project for 2023 is a website redesign. Our current website, visitroseville.com, is over six years old, which is ancient in the world of technology. Tempest was awarded the contract not only because they specialize in designing destination marketing organization websites throughout the country, but it will also integrate with our sales system. The new website will feature and exceed accessibility standards and incorporate tools for people with disabilities. Content pages, listing events, blog entries, landing pages, and microsites can be visually featured in multiple ways along the website, helping travelers discover unique content to help them plan their journey and foster growth for our city. And the most exciting thing is actually the first bullet on there. We were awarded a $20,000 grant from Explore Minnesota Tourism.
And it was a competitive grant, so. Kudos to you. We have a lot going on, but we feel it's very important to be involved in our community in order to promote perfectly positioned Roseville as a place to work, play, and stay. And you can see some of the organizations that individuals in our association are involved with. I knew we threw a lot of information at you, but if you have any questions, let us know. You all have a copy of the PowerPoint and the Tourism Matters fact sheet. Take a look at it, and if anything pops up and there's anything you'd like to ask us, you can reach all of us by using info@visitroseville, otherwise we all have our own email accounts. But thank you very much for your time, and are there any questions?
Thank you for the presentation. Are there questions or feedback from the council members this evening?
Just a comment. I appreciate your comment about redesigning the website and being more inclusive. That's really important, and people that have different abilities need to be able to access that. So, thanks.
Other questions? Councilmembers.
I just also wanted to comment. I appreciate the website redesign. I know that often I share with people that they should go look at it, and they don't know that it exists, and so if it's a really useful tool and there's a lot there, hopefully we can continue to drive people there. I keep telling small businesses, you know, get some coupons on there and get people connected, so I think it can just keep growing. We just have to all work to put it, get all of our minds focused on it.
Thank you. Definitely. And when they start to build out the site, it's about an eight-month process. And first, there's a creative brief, and we meet with them, and they get to know the city and everything that we do. But one important part of it is that they build in the search engine optimization just to increase the awareness and drive people to the website. So it's all created around that.
The other thing I would love to ask is if there was any way you could focus on some of the wonderful small businesses that we were able to elevate in the last year through the city of Minneapolis with some of our tools, that would be great, too, just we were able to build up a lot of small businesses, and we'd love to see them and others continue to kind of share some of the limelight, because it's really nice to see them build and thrive here.
Great. Nice.
That's the Grow Roseville?
The Grow Roseville.
Any other questions or feedback from council members?
Thanks for your good one.
Thank you.
I did want to, a couple of things. I think the website, one of the uses that may be underutilized or people are under-aware of is it's a great way to decide where to go for a lunch meeting in Roseville. And to the extent that you can sort of link some of the videos of the various establishments to the actual, where people can get, can, as they're searching through a list, click on a video and see sort of a review or that sort of thing, that might be kind of interesting to do. But definitely for local businesses, they may not be as aware that that's a tool that's out there, too, if they've got folks coming in for a meeting and they either want to take them to lunch or dinner or bring in food, you know, that's maybe an opportunity to make a connection there with the website. I did want to ask about the business travel projections, because, you know, I know during the pandemic, obviously, there was a lot of Zoom meeting going on, and just in some industries, including an industry that I'm involved in, trade shows have gone by the wayside because of the internet and because of being able to basically meet people virtually. And I'm wondering if that's a trend that we're seeing impact business travel, or if it's too early to tell on that.
Well, it is impacting business travel, but there's also the thing that people want to get together and meet. And last year, we attended Destinations International for the first time in two years, and it was a sellout crowd, because people, people need to connect and they need to get together. So conferences and conventions are coming back, as are trade shows, and it's going to be slow, and attendance might be lower right now, but as things ramp up and the economy recovers, like they said, inflation is affecting business travel, and what people spend on business travel is not going to return until 2027, but it's slowly and steadily improving. But, but again, people want that face-to-face interaction. Zoom has been great. I mean, and Zoom, for Minnesota Association, a convention and Visitors Bureau, we have meetings, monthly meetings, but people from all over the state of Minnesota can't always make them, so our attendance was low. In Zoom, it's exploded, and that's reinvigorated in our organization, but also has been like, hey, now that I know these people, I can put names to faces, and I'm having interaction with them, I want to meet them in person. So our meetings, our education meetings and our annual conferences have gotten larger in numbers, because people feel more comfortable going, because they've talked with people on Zoom. So it's a double-edged sword, you know? It's good and it's bad for occupancy, but, you know, it's going to be the way of the world. And luckily, we're a good city for leisure travel, so leisure's our big deal, and the corporate traveler, which needs to come back.
All right. Any other questions?
Well, thank you again for all the work that you do year-round in promoting Roseville and our hospitality businesses and just generally Roseville. So I appreciate the update and look forward to more good work and hearing about and seeing the new website as that gets underway.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good job.
All right. Next on our agenda is a public hearing to consider renewal of a liquor license for Tullum Hall, and I believe, Mr. Trechun, you'll be introducing this item?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. As you mentioned, this is a public hearing to consider approving a liquor license renewal for 2023 for Mito LLC or Tullum Hall. It's a former Grumpy's site along Snelling, if you recall. The City Council may also recall in 2022, we did grant them a license. They have not opened up yet. They're still finishing up the remodeling, my understanding. They hope to open in February, so they are in front of us here to get a renewal of their liquor license. We did review the material that they submitted, and they meet all the requirements for the city, so we do recommend approval of the liquor license. But however, there is a public hearing, so we should pause and take any comment on that, and then, as I said, after that, the City Council should consider the license renewal. Be happy to answer any questions.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Trechun. Are there questions from the council for staff on this renewal? And this is an on-sale license, just to clarify.
On sale, yes.
I was looking in the material to see what kind of license it was.
Yeah.
That is what it is. If there's no questions, do we have anybody participating remotely at this time?
We do not, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Well, we'll open up the public hearing and provide an opportunity for members of the public to speak to this requested liquor license renewal. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to speak to this item this evening? All right. Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing, and we'll move to council consideration of the request to renew the on-sale liquor license for Tullum Hall, as it's been outlined in the materials presented by Mr. Trechun. Is there a motion from the council?
Second.
All right. It's been moved by Councilmember Atten, seconded by Councilmember Groff, to approve that liquor license renewal. Any discussion on the motion as the maker, Councilmember Atten? Second, Councilmember Groff.
Forward to them opening.
All right. I'm sure they do, too. Is there any other discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor of approving the motion, or excuse me, all in favor of the motion to approve the license renewal signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously, and that license renewal is approved. Next is to consider an ordinance rescinding ordinance number 1616 and lifting the moratorium that was put on place last year on the sales of edibles and beverages infused with THC products. I'll turn it over to Mr. Trechun again to introduce this item.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As you mentioned, we are looking to rescind ordinance 1616 and lift the moratorium regarding the sale of edibles and beverages with THC. As you may recall, the legislature last session did pass a law that allowed for some edibles and some beverages to be infused with THC up to a certain level. In the immediate aftermath, many cities learned about that for the first time and then scrambled a little bit to try to figure out what that meant for our city. On August 8th, the City Council did pass a moratorium in order to spend some time looking at what the best licensing and regulatory framework would be. And so we did work through the early fall, and on November 7th, 2022, we did pass an ordinance that did set up a licensing framework for the city for the sale of THC products. Since that time, the city has put in the administrative controls and the processes, and we are now at a point where we feel it is good for us to consider rescinding that ordinance and allowing for that. I would note, later on the consent agenda, you have two THC licenses up for consideration that meet all the requirements, of course, but it's something that is now in place here. So we would think from a staff perspective, it's perfectly fine and acceptable to rescind that ordinance as we have a licensing framework in place. So quite simply, the city attorney did draft an ordinance for you to consider. It's been posted properly, and we're asked for your consideration and passage of that tonight. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Questions for staff on the proposed ordinance to rescind the original moratorium or interim ordinance? All right. Check if there's anyone from the public who wishes to speak to this ordinance this evening to rescind once again the moratorium on the sale of the THC products. Seeing no one come forward, close the opportunity for public comment and move to council consideration. I would note that there is an ordinance and an ordinance summary.
Yes, I'm sorry.
And so we want to take two actions, one to approve the ordinance, and then presuming that happens, to approve the summary. Just a follow-up question for you, Mr. Trechun. If we happen to not rescind the ordinance and keep it in effect, would we not be able to take up then those applications this evening because we have a moratorium on the sale?
I would presume so. We would not want to in good faith allow for the sale, not grant a license for sale if we still have something on the books, but I defer to the city attorney.
Presuming our attorney would concur with that.
Your attorney concurs.
All right. Very good. Well, then, we've got the matter before us. Is there a motion from the council to adopt the ordinance that rescinds the original moratorium in ordinance 1616?
So moved. Second.
All right. It's been moved by Councilmember Groff, seconded by Councilmember Schroeder by a hair. Discussion on the motion? Councilmember Groff as the maker?
No, no discussion. I think we followed our procedure, and I think it's time to make the change.
All right. As the second of Councilmember Schroeder.
It's straightforward at this point.
Any additional discussion?
Nope.
I think the only thing we'll say is that, once again, we put the ordinance in place to allow the city the ability to come up with a regulatory framework while at the same to allow the city the ability to come up with a regulatory framework while at the same time not having the sales ongoing, so that we could have some ability to control it. And then, once, once we did put that in place, as Mr. Trudgeon said, then we're in a position to remove the moratorium. So with that, we've got the motion to adopt the ordinance rescinding the moratorium. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post? That passes unanimously. Is there a motion on the ordinance summary?
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember Atten, seconded by Councilmember Strawn to adopt the ordinance summary. Once again, the ordinance summary needs to pass by a two-thirds majority by law, which in this case is four fifths of the five-member council. If there's no discussion on that motion, it's fairly straightforward administrative procedure, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post? That passes unanimously, meeting the two-thirds majority requirement. That then brings us to our final business item this evening, item 7D, which is considering commission reappointments and depending on the outcome of that conversation, potentially declaring any vacancies as a result of the reappointment consideration this evening. I'll just turn it over to Mr. Trudgeon again to introduce this item, which is back before us after we received some additional information since our earlier meeting in January. Mr. Trudgeon?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just real briefly here, we're back to consider the reappointments of those members that are eligible for reappointment. At the last meeting, we did consider that, as well as declaring vacancies. The council did declare vacancies on the commissions where people were turned off. Wanted some additional information, as per our policy, that we did not include into the packet. Since that time, we have provided council with information and feedback, and specifically from the chairs, about the reappointments from those that we received. So that information you should be aware of now. So we have a total of seven commission members that are up for, that are eligible and up for reappointment. I did leave, and it was in your packet last time, but not in this packet, the appointment process, just to refresh your memory on the reappointment process. You can take a look at the applications and have the conversation and reappoint them tonight. You can also request that you interview one or all of them, if you'd so like to do that. So in the RCA, we also have a calendar of kind of where we're at here, and we'll proceed accordingly, depending on your action.
All right, thank you, Mr. Trudgeon. And to clarify for the public, RCA means staff report?
I'm sorry.
We're working on the acronym situation. All right, council, we have before us then the information about the seven individuals who are eligible and interested in reappointment. We've got their application materials and attendance history information, and I'll open it up to the council for how the council might like to proceed. I would note also, not to necessarily muddy the water, we did receive from City Manager Trudgeon earlier, I believe it was today, information about a person who's not currently at the end of a term and involved in the reappointment process, however, was appointed, I believe, last fall as part of that, or maybe earlier last year, and has not attended many, if any, meetings and has not been responsive to staff outreach. So we may want to take that up this evening as well, since we're engaged in a appointment process and an application process, and consider whether we want to look at another vacancy in that case. So that's on the table, too, and I'll turn it over to the council for thoughts from the council.
I have a quick question. Mr. Trudgeon, can you share with us the, there are seven people up for, potentially eight people up. How many openings do we expect to have over and above that?
I don't have the number off the top of my head. I know Planning Commission would have one and, and Public Works.
I think it's a comparable number, if I remember right.
Yeah.
Other comments, questions? Councilmember Strawn?
I think you. I really appreciate having all the information that we've had shared with us. I think that given we've had COVID, we've had just unusual last couple of years, and we have people with all different, some have, many people who have been unable to fulfill their terms, and that may be normal, but I do know that we have many applicants who seek this role, and we're very fortunate. There are a friend who's on a council in another city who's been on it for like 15 years because no one else ever steps up, so we don't have that. I would like to propose that we re-interview all of our candidates, so we have an opportunity to make committees that work well together, because there've been people remote and constituted in all different ways, and I do think that falls on us to create great teams that provide us great opportunity and great information. And neither Councilmember Schroeder or I have had an opportunity to interview these candidates in the past, especially the folks who maybe have had a lot of opportunities but haven't been able to attend. I think it'd be good just to kind of, we all level set together. So I'd like to recommend that all of the folks who are up for, for reappointments re-interview with us.
Thank you, Councilmember Strawn. Other thoughts or questions or comments, Councilmember Groff?
So that would give us about 14 is the number we're thinking of applicants to interview.
Well...
No, it would be more than that because it's 14 positions to fill.
It would be these seven plus whatever we might get for other, depending on what you do with the reappointments.
Well, I do agree with Councilmember Strawn that it would be good to have input from them, especially with the, some of the attendance and things. I think it would just be a good idea to re-interview everyone. It went fairly quickly last time, last year. I think, I think we have our system down.
So they would be interviewed as part of the, the scheduled interview dates on the, in March, then? And if we decide not to reappoint someone on the basis of the interviews, then would we have to open up the applications?
You would have them all open now? Like you'd declare all of these as vacancies as well as the ones that we knew already?
So they would be competing essentially against new folks in that case, yeah?
They would. That's what my understanding would be, is that everyone would interview equally. That means the council would be able to choose the best two people or whatever would be on that commission, that group of people.
Other discussion from council members?
My understanding is that if two council members recommend that, though, that that is part of the process, so that it doesn't have to be approved by the council for that to go forward?
I was about to say that, I just wanted to make sure.
Okay.
We had a chance for a little more discussion first.
Yeah.
Because, yeah, as soon as, as soon as two people are interested in interviewing people. Mr. Trudgeon?
You know, just in looking at the policy, I don't know if it's automatic or required to do it at the same time as the other candidates. It's just what it says, if two council members requested a commissioner seeking reappointment will be scheduled to attend an interview before the entire council. So that can mean a future meeting, it can mean during the processes, whatever you want. So I don't think we've ever done this before, so this is new grounds, but you know, that's also consideration.
Yeah, I'm trying to remember, I think we did actually do re-interview maybe once during my time, but I'm not even 100% sure on that. And that's a good point, is that wouldn't have to be in that same timeframe as, as interviews for everybody else if we wanted to consider the reappointment questions separately from the vacancies. So the two ways we can go forward on it, which is why I wanted to talk a little bit about it before we kind of decided, would be to lump everybody together and essentially create seven vacancies or declare seven vacancies in addition to the ones we've already put in place, and then everybody interviews on that March 7th, 8th timeframe, you know, or we have a separate interview process for reappointment, and those folks could be reappointed on an earlier basis if they're, if they're eligible and we're interested in doing that. And then the March 7th and 8th timeframe would just be for whatever vacancies remain, at which time, obviously, presuming we do a different schedule for, for reappointment interviews, we would have some knowledge between the end of that process and the interviews that we do on, you know, the beginning of March, as well as our decision later in March as to how many vacancies we're trying to fill, and obviously take necessary actions there. So I think those, unless I'm missing something, those would be the kind of general two paths to take, and we can talk about what seems the most appropriate from the council's perspective. Councilmember Schroeder?
I, I would appreciate the opportunity to interview the people we're reappointing. I do think, though, if they have fulfilled, you know, they've done a good job and it seems they're, the chairs think so, I think we should give them the opportunity to be reappointed versus competing for, you know, new people going to the same position. So I, I do like the idea of separate them into the two groups because then, and then we don't necessarily have to reappoint them, but I would think it would be, if they've already committed themselves to wanting to be reappointed and if they've done a good job, I'd like to be able to let them continue with that versus trying to compete with new people.
Other thoughts? Or additional thoughts? Councilmember Atten?
I'm struggling with this. I haven't been around as long as you have, but I haven't seen this before. So I think this is a, this is a big decision, and fair enough to say yes, then it is what it is. But we have certainly several people who are here who have worked very hard and done their, done their work. So it, for me, it's a little bit of a surprise to, to be discussing this, but I can see the why. Considering the timeframe that we're in, I don't know how much ahead of the March dates we could get an interview process going, and we have to turn that around pretty fast to get them before, and I think...
I'll do within a couple of weeks.
Yeah. What I, we all have. It's not just those seven people who have to figure out their lives, but we have, you know, the logistics for all of us suddenly dropping everything and having a night of interviews or something like that is going to be a big deal. I don't know, I would defer to some who brought this up first, but there's, if there's an interest to see the whole pool against who else is out there in the community interested, then it makes more sense for it to happen at the same time. If we're going to do this, then I think that makes a little more sense for me than, you know, but I would defer to others.
I can see an advantage either way. So I, you know, I think how that would work, because yes, a candidate who is there now may be head shoulders above the other options that prevent, and we're just going to have to, we're not going to know, we're going to have to pick one way because we aren't going to know which way is going to work the best. And really, I'm suggesting all candidates rather than single, like now one or two people, just because of the situation. I think it's, like I said, I do appreciate that maybe if we are really working to create these great teams, though, that maybe we will get them all together so that we can see how they fit together. It certainly helps to know if you get, you know, two or three people with similar skills, teams, those commissions are built up of people with complementary aspects, so.
Councilmember Groff?
I think the other thing is the chairs do try to come to those interviews, so it'd be nice if we had their input also, and probably putting everyone together would be a better use of their time. It really didn't take us, what was it, like eight minutes per person last time we interviewed? And I would prefer having the knowledge of everyone there rather than just the ones who've been on there. And many of these will be reappointed, I'm convinced, because they've done good work, but we know that, and the chair would be there to reiterate that for us. That's why I'm leaning that way.
Thank you, Councilmember Schroeder.
I would definitely say we should do it on the same night instead of trying to do it in two different, you could still, but the only, again, the only part I wa, I do not want to send the message to the people who are on these commissions that since this is something unique, that for some reason we think they've done a poor job. And so I think the way we would communicate this, I mean, it is important to have someone come in to be re-interviewed. So I didn't want them to think that we didn't appreciate their work so far.
I think I appreciate that because I think that's an important point to make to the folks, is that it's not, we're not singling out this group of seven folks, you know, because of anything in particular to them, other than the circumstances, as I understand it, of having been in a lot of remote meetings over the last couple of years and new, new council participants and some things like that. So certainly it would be important to relay that information to those folks in that sense. Certainly, we wouldn't ask for further reapplications, I don't think. I think we have all the materials we need for those folks. It's the interview process that we're looking at, as I understand it. So the, the matter would be just to get them scheduled for a time on, on the day or days when we're doing the interviews.
And certainly, as, you know, maybe they are the first of their pool, just so that we meet and hear them first in the group, because they're obviously going to be able to show their experience and how, I think some of the questions that we had last time about specific experiences were phenomenal and really made it clear who was going to, who had that process together for us in a way that we hadn't seen in the other interviews up to that time. So I think if we could have something like that. But I certainly think, you know, noted incumbent noted preferential times, so they're up front and just, it's really not against any one person or any one thing, but wanting to try to make sure that we can make sure we have people who are filling out as many terms as possible so that we are able to do a good job helping them do a good job. I mean, we also, we're kind of their boss in this situation, and it's up to us to build good teams, and I think we've just all become disconnected and disengaged from that whole process as much as we work on it. So it's really just to look at it from a higher standpoint, and since that option exists, I think it would be nice to utilize it.
Is the, is the sense that this would be, this would be basically a one-time approach, or is this to become the new norm, I guess, is the question? Do we evaluate that after we get through the process?
I think we, we do this, this time and see what, maybe it's just honor us, and we're like, no, not again, but we don't know.
I have a comment on the, the reapplication. I think it's also an opportunity for the people who've been on for three years to up their resume and let us know some of the other interests they have, because some of these resumes are pretty bare bones compared to...
We did, we did get that through this most recent update of requests for information, so I'm not sure that we would ask them for more.
And that wasn't updated once, or did they just resubmit what they had?
I think they, they had an opportunity to update the information and either said it's all good or added anything.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, they, some did add, yeah.
Oh, good.
Yep.
So we have the latest from them, I think. I think, you know, just in terms of the timing, I, I think it's going to be a little bit of a function of when people are available to interview, and so we'll sort of have to, I understand the notion of clustering the reapplications or the reappointments sort of together, but it, it may ultimately come down to when folks are able to be there. So I don't know that I want to be, I think we can try to do that, but I don't, you know, if it works better for people on different days or times or whatever, we'll, you know, we should be differential, deferential to that. Councilmember Schroeder?
And I would want to add, if for some reason, because of the short notice, they aren't able to come to interview, that that shouldn't be the reason not to be reappointed?
Well, and hopefully, because of the fact that that's March 7th, and tonight is January 23rd, we can get them notice like tomorrow.
But if people have, like if they're out of town or something, so I guess my point being that should not be the reason we would not reappoint them, that we still consider them if for some reason they can't make it.
I see what you're saying.
In the past, when we're not, when they're not able to make that, it's up to us to contact them and to interview them on our own. So I think that expectation should remain, yes.
Right. The other thing, just from a logistic point of view, I don't know that we need to actually declare these sevens positions vacant this evening as part of this process. At first, I was coming into it thinking that we had just done, in reacting, you know, I thought that we would have to do that, but I think ultimately it's, it becomes a technicality, and if we don't happen to reappoint somebody, we could sort of as part of that action, declare the vacancy in that position, and then we'll, we can follow up with the ability to then appoint an additional new person to that particular commission as all part of the same lump of actions that we take ultimately later in March. So that's just in case folks are thinking that there might be some, some negative or downside to declaring these folks' positions as vacant, you know, in, in advance of the, the reinterview process. I don't know that we want to necessarily go, go that far in terms of being respectful of these folks that have already served. Councilmember Atten?
A couple of thoughts there. First, we have one person going for reappointment for the police civil service, but otherwise there would not be anything posted about having an opening for that. So if you put it out to say, hey, who's out there, we almost have to at least post. Now, we could change the posting and saying, there are openings for these ex-commissions without a specific number on it, but I, I think if we're going to do this, then we have to include the police civil service as one of the positions that is...
More broadly.
Potentially available for someone. The other, other commissions, Finance, HRIAC, and Public Works are the other ones that are affected by this decision, and they already have openings. So one of the questions would be, do we just not say, hey, we have, because this would give us four openings on the HRIAC? Not say four, but say there are openings.
Yeah.
And take the number out of it?
So we could just say there's openings on every commission, essentially, or say there's positions potentially available on every commission, you know, without getting into the...
Except Park and Rec, which has no openings at this point.
Oh.
Yeah.
And no reappointments.
Something like this? I'm sorry.
According to our RCA two weeks ago?
No, we did do that, okay.
Yeah. We had, one wasn't available to be reappointed, and one chose not to be reappointed.
Yeah, my apologies, yeah, the chair.
So that's all vacancies there.
There are two vacancies, and that's what it would be.
And no reappointments.
Right.
Does that make sense from the council's perspective, then?
I agree with Councilmember Atten on that. I think if we're going to do it, we, and we say we need to have double the amount of people that we should reopen and do it all at once, I guess.
So does that mean declare the vacancies tonight or not? That's what I wanted to clarify, actually, what both Councilmember Atten was saying and your concurrence with that.
I would advocate for declaring tonight so that we can move forward on the timeline as indicated here, otherwise we would have to readjust our timeline.
I don't know that we would have to readjust our timeline. I think we would just have to say, in terms of how we promote this to people in the public, that folks can apply for any commission.
There's openings on each commission?
Yes.
Yeah.
There's potential for appointment to each commission is maybe a better way to say it.
Right.
Because technically, as Councilmember Ratten said, there isn't an opening unless we declare a vacancy on the police civil service commission. I think that's the tech, that's the, the, you know, whatever, getting in the weeds point of this whole thing.
Yep. We can craft that statement out there so we can kind of cover all bases.
So, it sounds like generally the council is more, um, what's the word I'm looking for? More leaning towards not declaring vacancies this evening on these seven, but making sure that we advertise for all in a way that doesn't sound like there's. Where there aren't. All right? Um, I don't know that we need a motion necessarily. I think hopefully staff has got the direction from the, the council's discussion this evening and we can move forward on that basis. All right. Very good. So, we'll look forward to that process. And appreciate once again all of the folks who have given their time to the commissions and, uh, hopefully they'll have the opportunity to be reappointed in due course here. With that then, uh, all that we have left on our agenda for business is the consent agenda. Uh, Mr. Trudgeon, are you prepared to give us a rundown on the consent agenda?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If I could have the computer screen, please? Give me one second to get it set up here.
Mayor, before we go on, we did not answer the question about the commissioner on the finance commission with the attendance thing. So, I feel like we need to.
No, good point.
Think about that.
So, before we go to the consent agenda.
And if I could just add on that, there was a late communication about 4:45, 5:00 PM.
Oh.
We did hear back from the, the chair and the, um, commissioner. So, I just want to make sure you saw that, if you haven't.
I haven't seen it.
No, no.
Can you summarize the information?
Yes.
Is this person repentant or looking to change?
Just a person struggles making persons in meeting because of a variety of, of, um, health concerns and would like to be able to, uh, meet through Zoom. Um, and, uh, I think we want to give some thought on what our policy is and what the state law is. My understanding is a person can meet remotely as long as they make their place public, both advertising and open to the public. So, in this case, it would be the individual's home. If she's not able to meet virtually, uh, then she said she would probably resign. But there was not a resignation in there. It's just, it's kind of a conversation that's ongoing, so.
I don't think we should take action this evening then. It sounds like we should wait for that, that process to work through. Also, it happens that we do have a potential change to the open meeting law working its way through the legislature in terms of, um, allowing people to have up to three vacancies, or three vacancies, vacancies on the line, three absences, or three participations remotely per year, but without having to have that declaration of the public health emergency. So, that, that would help the situation for a lot of folks. Although certainly if somebody prefers to do entirely remote meetings, three, uh, comes up pretty quickly. So, why don't we plan on talking more about this once some more of that process has had a chance to go through, if that makes sense?
Yeah, rejection.
All right. That's what we'll do then. Then we'll go to the consent agenda with Mr. Trudgeon. And thanks for reminding me that that was still on the.
You betcha.
On the docket here.
All right. All right. We're fairly short consent agenda tonight. Item 10A approves payments in the amount of $2,823,882.22. Item 10B approves two THC products licenses to Discount Smoke Shop and Roseville Smoke Shop. Both are age-restricted tobacco stores and eligible to receive licenses. City code permits a total of eight THC product licenses and these two establishments will be the first two license issued. I would mention too, we're in contact with the other age-restricted tobacco stores to make sure that they're either getting a license or stop selling the THC products. My guess is that they're going to want to pull a license. And we've been in communication with them but have not received an application at this point.
And how many are there?
There's four age-restricted tobacco stores in the city of Roseville.
Just to be clear, um, anybody who may currently be selling but doesn't have a license has to stop selling those products.
Yes.
Until they have a license in place. It's not that we let them keep going.
Nope.
Through the process. I think that's important to make known to people in terms of our enforcement and things like that.
So, yeah, we have reminded them, but, um, there needs to be some, some enforcement, follow-up on, on all that. But I just wanted to mention that, that we have forgotten about those, but so far they have not submitted anything, uh, application. Uh, item 10C approves the purchase of practice animal for training purposes and firearms for the police department as part of the CIP replacement program. Item 10D approves the annual contract with Northeast Youth and Family Services for its work with the Roseville community in the amount of $81,071. In addition, these action, this action will approve additional contract with NYFS for a community advocate service that will work directly with the Roseville Police Department in the amount of $22,351. And then Fryham, the item 10E accepts 2022 Police Department Body Cam Audit Report.
All right, thank you, Mr. Trudgeon. Is there a motion on the consent items?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Councilmember Strong, second by Councilmember Schroeder. Uh, discussion?
No, thank you.
And I did just want to note on that, just following up on the THC discussion, if we're noticing other entities that are selling them, we want to make sure that we're, you know, getting them to stop until they have a license in place, if they so choose to have a license. I think it's important that not just those age-restricted tobacco, but anybody else that might be out there that thinks they can, whether it's a convenience store or a kiosk or in the mall or something like that, that we're on top of that and making sure that we're shutting those down until they're properly licensed, if they want to do that.
They need.
Yep. Anything else? Otherwise, we have the motion be forced to adopt the consent items. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close. That passes unanimously. Those items are approved or accepted. Uh, next we have a future agenda review, communications, reports, announcements. And I'll turn it over once again to Mr. Trudgeon for the upcoming agenda review.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, next Monday, our next meeting is January 30th. We have, uh, two proclamations. We also have John Connolly from Twin Cities North to give a quick chamber presentation. We're also receiving a presentation from Excel about their 2023 Power Pole Project in Roseville. That was alluded to as part of, um, Mr. Fryham's presentation at our last meeting. We also will have a Park and Rec Commission here for a joint meeting. They'll talk about the work they're doing and also focus specifically on Pocahontas Park and the renaming of that. Uh, we also have community development staff here and I believe a consultant to start the discussion on Phase Two, the zoning code update. That's something the, um, Department and Planning Commission have been working on the past year. This is just more of an introduction, so there's no, um, uh, thought of getting anything passed, uh, obviously, uh, the next meeting, but just to start the conversation. And then on the consent agenda, we'll have a couple of short-term rental licenses. Our next meeting after that is the February 13th meeting and we'll have NYFS President and CEO Angela Luis DeMello, uh, present and just talk a little bit about, uh, their work. We also have some presumptive penalties for tobacco violations. I understand one will be coming to the council for tobacco violations and I think four for alcohol violations. Uh, we also have the Lake Owasso Ski Asphalum Course permit requests that we do every single year. Then on the 24th, uh, we'll have a proclamation for Women's History Month. We'll have Nine North Executive Director Jeff Ongstad, uh, present here just to talk a little bit about their work. We'll have, uh, Thomas Brooks, our Equity Inclusion Manager for City Equity Update and also present the City Workforce Report, breaking down the demographics. And then we also look to, uh, award the, uh, Contract for Compensation and Classification Study that was included as part of the budget. That's the timeline right now. We'll see if we still are able to, to meet that date, but, um, that's the schedule right now.
I think that's the 20th, right?
Uh, I did have the wrong date there.
I think it's the wrong date, but that's.
It's the 28th, uh, 27th, I should.
Okay.
Yeah. Yep, thank you. Um, so that is the future agenda report. The only other thing I want to mention is this Wednesday, we do have a, a Roseville Business Council. Um, it's going to be here in City Council Chambers. Uh, last few years it's been in McGoff. It starts at 7:30 to 8:30. We're going to have, uh, members of the Minnesota Chamber of Commerce talk about their Grille Minnesota program. Uh, you can be here in person, but you can also, uh, join virtually as well. This is the first time we're trying it, so we'll see how it all goes here. But, um, this is just to warm up until we have February and the State of the City from, uh, the mayor. So, um, please attend if you can. If you can't attend in person, it's a great opportunity for you to attend virtually. If you're looking for, uh, registration, uh, let me know. I think emails were sent previously and hopefully you've gotten them, but if you haven't, I'd be happy to forward those to you. That's all I have.
Right. And just on the, uh, Business Council, is that something that's open to the general public to register for as well?
Yep, absolutely.
And they would connect through the Grille Roseville site, basically?
Yep, the Grille Roseville site. And, you know, if anybody's having any problems, you can ship them our way or the Community Development Department, we can help them.
Okay.
We don't turn any money away either, so.
Perfect. All right. Anything else from councilmembers in terms of announcements or liaison reports or, uh, items requested for future agendas? All right, welcome back, Councilmember Strong. Sorry we missed you for the first meeting of the year. Uh, hopefully, hopefully you recovered quickly and you're doing much better now.
It's been two weeks. I've had two other things since then. Um, I'd just like to add, uh, the Board of Metro Cities did their agenda, um, their legislative priorities and they were very similar to what we had, um, presented, um, as a, including the, um, catalytic converters and other items. So, um, they were very much in harmony with what we had already created. So, those are going forward from the Board of Metro Cities.
All right. And that's a good point for folks on the council. If you want to be on a, a committee, uh, those are usually in the summer and fall timeframe on both Metro Cities and League of Minnesota Cities, an opportunity to, to go to, I think it's like two or three meetings maybe, three meetings, and it's an opportunity to meet with leaders from across the state and adjust and, and perhaps even add policies to those legislative priorities of both those organizations. So, it's a pretty, pretty limited commitment and you can do it any year that it works for you and don't have to do it every year, so, but I would encourage folks to, to think about that as you're making your plans for the summer and fall. Uh, are there any other announcements or liaison reports? If not, the only other.
I'd just like to anecdotal. Uh, it's a little, a couple of months past now, but shortly after we passed our catalytic converter ordinance, which likely is to gain some traction in the state level this year. Um, one of our, um, Roseville police, uh, two, a team, um, did approach and say that they were very thankful for the opportunity to have another tool. Um, so that was really nice that they brought it forward and mentioned that, um, it gives them an opportunity. So, I know we questioned whether or not it was going to be beneficial, but they were thankful for that, um, other piece. So, hopefully we'll see more movement at the, at a higher level and have more teeth in anything that happens. But I just wanted to make sure you know that it was appreciated.
That's a good point. And, and I should note too, I think I just saw recently that, uh, both a bill at the legislature to do almost the same thing, make possession against the law, uh, but then also to deal with the sale and, and that aspect of it all. Both of those types of bills are moving through the legislature and we'll see where they go. But so hopefully, uh, through our advocacy as well as others, uh, that will, those will be successful. All right. With that, uh, and I think we do have hopefully a meeting scheduled or maybe potentially rescheduled with our legislators on our whole agenda for Councilmember Strong and I, as well as City Manager Trudgeon in the next several days. So, hopefully that will happen and we can get them advocating on our behalf. With that, that, the last thing on our agenda is a motion to adjourn. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember Strong, seconded by Councilmember Ratten to adjourn. No discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye. Close. That passes unanimously and we are adjourned at 7:14 PM. Thank you, everyone.